Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Eric Crackasy, Chair of the City Council. And it is November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. One week from Election Day. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. All council members are present, including our Executive Director Jennifer Kennedy, our Assistant Director Patty, and several of the staff. With that, we are going to jump in and begin with approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Whole October third, twenty twenty-three, and October twenty, or October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any changes or updates to the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, we will move on to the discussion items. First is a presentation of the independent audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, and Brenda Moore will be presenting.
So I think most of you have know this is Lawdwood from HBME. They're our auditors. Well, I'll just like, you know, talk about this audit and what they found. I'm gonna put just a PDF on the screen. Just so that if you refers to a page, I can go to a page so that we can about it. I know you only got the printed versions today when you showed up, but this is essentially the same.
That's upstairs. David and I got this one.
Did they get it all weekend to study it?
They had the electronic version.
So they have. Pleasure to be with all of you. I'm excited, this is my first one that's being done. I get another one by tomorrow, but I still have five more to go after that. We're keeping busy. Pleasure to be working not only with you as a council, but the administration compared to staff. I know we got a chance to talk with Jennifer over some issues, but Brenda and her group with Emily and Scott and so forth do a thing on top here at the city and managing the day-to-day tasks and trying to keep all the funds and all of that straight. Not only your enterprise funds, internal service funds, but also all your governmental funds, especially the general fund, which is really that's your operating account for most services here at the city. Really, while we're looking at page number nine in the book, Brenda will go to it. This is the independent auditor's report. So obviously, as state requirement, you guys are required to undergo an audit. Completed those services and in doing so, we issue you an opinion. So right up front in the, in the second paragraph, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects for governmental activities, business-type activities. Each major fund, which represents the column, represents usually the major fund. Your aggregate remaining fund information for non-major funds, which you have, then we give supplemental schedules on those. The balance sheets and income statements, any cash faults for your enterprise funds and internal service funds. We feel that everything presented within this is fairly stated. We don't feel there's any material exceptions noted. Now, we can't say that everything is one hundred percent because on an audit basis, we don't have time, nor do you have the resources for everybody in the state to want you to audit every single transaction that we did. So we do a lot of stuff via samples. We do confirmations with outside parties, banks, investment companies, so like Morton, state driver level for your PGM account. All of your bonds are confirmed with the banks. We do confirmation with Utah Department of Transportation, Salt Lake County for your property tax, state tax confirmation, or state tax commissions with your self-tax, residence plus franchise taxes with Rocky Mountain Power, Plum Star, and so forth. So we get a lot of confirmation and then make sure that both entities are in agreement with what they've provided. So best opinion, we, this is called an unmodified opinion. We also refer to it as a clean opinion because it's the best opinion I can give you. It's the only better one. There's also supplementary information, as we mentioned in the statements. So on two pages later, page eleven, we do give an in relation to opinion, meaning we've looked at the supplemental schedules and feel that those are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP, match what should be done to the city. One of the interesting notes is the next twelve or so pages is a management's discussion and analysis. Now, the management discussion and analysis is something that is prepared by management. In this case, Brenda prepares it. It's the only really place in the book that you will get a comparative basis on your statements between what happened in twenty twenty-three compared to what happened in twenty twenty-two on a summary level. So those tables begin on page seventeen at the bottom, and this covers your statement of net position on a summary basis. So if I were to look and say, hey, at the bottom for our governmental activities, cash and other assets decreased by five million dollars. You say, well, why did we decrease? Well, if you look at the building that we're in now, we spent like fourteen million dollars on this building. So you take this building out of it, you really had an increase. You can see that when you look at the total capital assets going from a hundred and sixty-four then to a hundred and eighty-two. Well, we capitalized this building for nearly thirty million, something like that, thirty million dollars. So we had a lot of capital asset activity. Now, we already had some of that on the books in the prior year that we've been building with for a couple of years. So now the building's complete and it's wonderful. You look at the proprietary funds and you say, okay, inherent and other assets for our business-type activities had a decrease of ten million dollars. Really, the, and we'll go through this on the next page, the significant portion of that decrease is the power fund. Power fund went through several months of having, in fact, they took a loss. They had to pay twelve point two million dollars more for power, purchasing of power on the market than, but the benefit is, is they have the resources to do it and you didn't have to pass that on to users. So it shows you, yeah, you could build up fund balances, but in the case of like power, those resources could be spent in a hurry to the tune of this year of twelve point two million dollars. So I know, I think that spurred you as a council to look at a three-year power rate adjustment that will take effect, that took effect in July. If you flip the next page, this gives you a summary. So at the top, Brenda, page nineteen. This gives you a summary of what we would say. Here's your income statement, your profit and loss, whatever you want to refer to it in governmental standards. It's referred to as a statement of activities. And it presents your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Looking down at the bottom, increase, decrease, and debt position. You've got seventeen million dollar increase in governmental activities and a two, sorry, a six point five million dollar loss in the business-type activities. Well, we obviously know what contributed the loss. That was power, everybody else actually had an increase. So operational-wise, when you look at the government as a whole, you've got very strong fund balances, you've got very strong operations, but you're monitoring your costs, monitoring your budgets. And we'll kind of go through that as we, as we present here. And probably the more interesting note is you guys probably track more the fund statement activity rather than the government as a whole. Looking at your budgets, you all adopt a budget. You amend the budget throughout the year. If expenditures and that are going to increase, so I go to, we're on page thirty-two of the financial statement. So on this, these are the balance sheet of the governmental funds. So for your governmental funds, you've got the general fund, you've got a capital project fund, a redevelopment agency fund, library fund, municipal building authority, and then you only have one other. So we just, instead of putting it in the back of the book, we put it up front cemetery fund. And that has very little activity. Overall, one of the key aspects that you as a council are always concerned with because it's a state law, if you look at the bottom where it says unassigned fund balance in the general fund of fifteen million seven twenty-four, you'll get asked if you, that balance compared to what is my total revenues in the general fund needs to be between five and a maximum of thirty-five percent. Right now, that calculation would give you twenty-five point nine percent here at the city. So you're below the maximum threshold at thirty-five. And I think you as a council and management have said, hey, we want to keep that around twenty-five. State raised it when COVID hit to put it up to thirty-five so you could save a little bit more resources, and they haven't changed it. I fully expected they would probably back it down. They haven't changed it in state law. So state law still says thirty-five percent, but you're well above the five percent, which means you're healthy. You've got some stuff that you can continue to do projects. Well, as we know, as we operate a government, we get our bills out there. Everything's gone up. I mean, I go to Wendy's and get a combo meal, and now it's like fourteen dollars instead of cents. You just look at that and say, okay, plus up, everything has gone up. So yeah, we have some resources, but they don't go as far as they used to. Other places too, it seems like if you go out and get lunch, lunch you can't get for under ten dollars anyway. Why go two dollars more places? Wait.
It's like when I get pizza now.
Okay, so if you look two pages later, we go over the income statement. Now, there's a few things I wanted to point out here in some changes that came about. One, the positive aspect.
You mentioned about thirty-five percent. And that had to have changed in the last few years because it used to be twenty-five. And so when you say you're surprised it wasn't changed back down, okay, what, you don't have any idea what they boosted it up for thirty figures?
I know they boosted it up so you could save additional resources that were more cost than other things that were done. So the state budget saver bumped it to thirty-five percent. Now, I had several agencies that were going above that or whatnot. It's true, this is to say, well, say, held twenty-five percent for so long. I was thought it was going to be a temporary change, apparently not. I don't mind the thirty-five for sure because you can see how fast money could. Didn't anticipate spending twelve additional million dollars, and we had no control over that. The cost was what the cost was. And luckily, you didn't have to pass that on to the residents. You had funds or resources built up that'll cover it. I want to point out on this one, so with, does that answer your question? So I, I don't know what their basis is. I'd like them just to really keep it where it's at because you kind of get used to it. If it went down, that just means we have to spend more money to get, to reduce. Do more of our projects, there's always a list. I've always said this, go talk to your engineer, and they can spend millions upon millions of dollars in a hurry. Over half the stuff by review is signed off by the engineer. One of the things I want to point out, so obviously, back in two, early two thousands, you, we joined Utopia along with thirteen and eighteen other cities, fourteen original members. This is the first year Utopia was in a position actually to refund some funds. So in June of two thousand and three, I believe they gave you the tune of five hundred and two thousand dollar refund. So if you look at the pledged payments there, we knocked it down and said, hey, our pledge payment was really one point nine, but then they gave five hundred thousand dollars back. So what we've done to try and match their schedule, first, we thought, well, they'd be paying interest. You know, if you pay a bank, they're going to attach it to the interest first. That's not how Utopia treated it. They treat it as a principal reduction. So I said, well, principal reduction means they just required us to pay less this year. So we bumped that payment down from one point nine to one point four because of that refund. Now, I know in your statements, you don't track it necessarily on the statement level with an allowance because it's, it's a bonus if we get the bunny. You're sitting right now with, I believe, twenty-three, just over twenty-three million dollars that you have provided to Utopia. They are still classifying that as a note payable on their end to you, which is a note receivable really for you. If we get it, the way we created it, bonus. But it looks like based on what's happened this year and even towards the end of last year, services and stuff at Utopia seems to be picking up. So they will, maybe they will be able to pay some of these resources back. They've got, they've got a big portion of debt. I think their fund balance is like a deficit three hundred plus billion. So that's a little ways to go.
They're still building.
But overall, if you look down at the bottom, changes of fund balances, every fund had a positive except the MBA. Well, the MBA was expected because we finished the construction of all part of this building. They still have some cash and what's not left for some things that need to be done. But you also see, find under miscellaneous, there's a one million eight. You, the general fund started paying for the rental of this building, and that funds ends up giving them the resources they need to pay back on the bonds. So you can see we started bond payments for five hundred and eighty-five in principal and one point two million dollars in interest. That's the reason for the governmental debt, that they have the resources to pay that. Any questions so far? I mean, I want this, what do you want to hear about? I can keep going through statements, and this is exciting. Maybe it's exciting for me and Brenda, it's not exciting for you. So what type of stuff would you guys like to know about?
I don't know.
We booked all the adjustments, were there any adjustments?
Did they get the letter that I sent today?
Yeah, I just have.
Okay, so in the letter that I sent out today, I attached to the back it up, the journal entries. So when Brenda and Emily gave me a trial balance, anything after that trial balance, we do as journal entries. So you want to just cover the journal entries?
Sure, there were eight. One of them was, he just talked about, it was the reclass of the Utopia UIA bond from the dividend down to offset our payment.
I didn't feel that was revenue coming back to the city. Revenue for one, they just refunded part of our bill with that payment instead.
Next year, we'll book it down there if and when we get it. There were a couple that were associated with the new standards on leases. It just, we needed to book it instead of a rent or lease payment as a source of lease principal. And one was bond proceeds, like a proceeds from borrowing because we've got a new lease. The others were reclassifications and a couple accruals that we missed. As people send us for the sixty days after June thirtieth, when they send us a check, quite a few of them we booked back in the previous year. We missed a couple. We missed the, the natural gas one, and we put one in the wrong category. It was due from a government as opposed to due from just a person. It was a reclass. So most of these were just reclasses or.
Picking up some additional accruals that need to be booked.
And that was it.
So the state tax commission is two months behind. So until, because they collect it from the business, goes to the state tax commission, and the state tax commission has thirty days to give it to you, hence sixty days. So when you're receiving payments from them at the end of August, they're paying you for services that really related to June. Everybody else is on a one-month lag because you're not going through another intermediary. Property taxes, the county collects it, then they remit it to you like ten days after the, the month end. Same with franchise taxes, that would be Questar. Rocky Mountain Power might do a little bit, not as much because you guys have your own power department. So really, the, the tax on power is really billed by you. And then the power fund has a transfer to the general fund to give the general fund the taxes it needs for the power. Whereas most other cities who don't have a power department, they get a huge check. I shouldn't say a huge check, they get a check for Rocky Mountain Power every month. You guys get it for natural gas like every other city as well. There's a tax on all the natural gas for the bills that each and every one of us in this room probably pays.
So don't we get a tech, I mean, a check from Rocky Mountain? We do, it's smaller, I mean.
It's a small one because you provide most of the power through the city. You do get a small one.
And we just missed one, we missed the.
You just the Dominion.
Yeah, we missed the Dominion.
Class one, so not earth-shattering.
It wasn't earth-shattering, but be aware.
None of these journal entries that we have were really kind of earth-shattering of what I would say a material or significant deficiency weaknesses. They were just normal, run-of-the-mill errors, hey, we missed something. I've had them where they've gone the other way. I have had a city council, this is back in two thousand and seventeen, worth finding ever that I gave, it was one, it was, I considered it a material weakness because it was like nine, ten percent of revenues. But they, looking at this, say, hey, this wasn't just the year end that we missed the accrual. This was in your books of January, August, because they use those state tax commission. They reported the accrual in the prior fiscal year, and then they never reversed those. So they recognize the revenues for sales tax, telecommunications tax, transient room tax, again. So when I looked at the taxes from an analytical, when I first started with the cities, like, did you guys open up something big? Costco, car dealership, like, no, everything's still the same. It's like, how did your sales tax revenues increase thirty percent? I mean, they were through the roof, where we had over a million dollars. So that's where you say, okay, nobody caught it. That's a significant material adjustment that we were bring to your attention. I wrote up a finding on that, and it says, nope, nobody caught it. And that, these ones, these are relatively small, tens of thousands of dollars. I don't think anything breaks a hundred thousand dollars on this thing. So really, if you look at it towards each of the fund, there are some of these that Brenda could have made the choice, I don't want to book it, and I, it wouldn't have changed my opinion.
I'm assuming that anytime we get a check from Utopia, it probably would come in through adjustments, right?
It would, it would come in and it really, no, we, we, you won't see it. Next time when I book it, I will book it directly against that, I believe.
That was just different. I felt from an accounting standpoint, it really wasn't a miscellaneous going into the city. It's like, they're paying me back some of my expenses or reducing their notes. So either I've got interest income and a reduction of principal, or in this year with how they were treating on their books, it's, it's just a reduction. Instead of us giving them one point nine, we just gave one point four. Because that's what they increased our note by, it's the one point four. And so I just want to match it up so we don't have to do significant reconciliations between them and us. Because right now, we're already not booking the interest money there on any of those. And that goes for my other cities that are with Utopia, Layton does the same thing. We're not recording the interest because we're not guaranteed we're going to get it. We have to write this thing off. Why would I want to write more interest off? So we do a reconciliation, both of the entries for me on permission like that. Assume also the other movers on the same, I know Les Valley have seen their books on that one form. Same thing, it's, it's not a guarantee that you're going to get. It's like, well, then I'm not going to put it on my management table, not that thing down as their own. And if I get it, right, bonus.
How long do cities usually keep it on the books?
I wouldn't remove it. So with your, in your case, it's because they're still giving, if you can, I confirmed it with them, and they confirm, yeah, this is how much we owe each of the other. I have every city.
So they acknowledge it, too.
They acknowledge it, because they acknowledge it, it's like, well, we don't want it to go away. Because what happens, you have elections and that coming up. Councils turn over, mayors turn over, management turns over. I don't want to get rid of this off the books to say, hey, we're not expecting it anymore. No, we're still expecting it, we're just not going to give an accounting grievance one at a time. So we're footnote disclosing yours, whereas like Layton City, they put it in their receivable as here's a note receivable, but then there's an offsetting allowance without full counts. We don't do that step here, as long as you disclose it, so somebody's tracking. If you tend to write them off, it's like, um, what do I do with this check? Whereas if somebody's new that comes in, I don't know where to put this.
Yeah, okay.
So don't get rid of the full-on accounting.
No, I was curious to know because I know it's been there since the ages of time, it seems like.
We've built it up quite a bit, right?
Yeah.
And I know the attorney, he had a strong opinion on that one.
Previous attorney. Don't know what current attorney.
Obviously, if I, if we flip to page seventy-one, the standard setters have been stopped issuing out new accounting standards. I'll give this as a reference. Back in two thousand and two, we were at Gatsby thirty-four. And that was two thousand and two. Fast forward to two thousand and twenty-three, we're up to at least Gatsby one oh one, one oh two. They're averaging like five to six standards head here. Now, not all those standards are applicable for you, but they've been accelerating. Over the last two years, we've had some significant ones. Eighty-seven, which dealt with operating leases, they now want those reported. And we talked about this last year, you afford a right to use, intangible right to use lease asset on your books, and then a lease payable on your books for all operating leases. Whereas before, we only did that for capital leases. Now, they've done it for subscriptions based on software-based information technology arrangements. So Brenda and crew looked at your contracts with various items like police cam stuff used, fire department stuff used here, your Tyler software, and looked at the standard requirements to scrub out. I think she found one that dealt with the power department on their, was it SCADA?
SCADA system.
On the SCADA system. So I know we paid sixty thousand dollars in twenty-three to begin that asset. So we put that asset at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and the payable obviously has already been reduced by sixty. So that is an agreement you've entered into for the next four or five years to have that system. But we'll continue to analyze new stuff each and every year because those two standards, both for the lease and the subscriptions, aren't going away. It's supposed to make the standards clear, cut, and dry. I'm telling you, it's becoming confusing. Your regular person that's just like an accounting clerk, those calculations are very complex. One of the things, we've adopted that new standard and put it into your books. I fully anticipate you've applied, and I think you've received the award for forty-two or forty-three years on excellence in financial, forty-three, excellence in financial reporting.
The mayor.
Very confident you're going to get it to the forty-fourth year, provided you submit the application.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not doing it. I don't want to be the person who, yeah, it's the run.
And they are firm in that report. Anybody who, that we've audited that's ever submitted that report has always got it. So if they want a payed fee and go through the report, I haven't ever had one that's been rejected. I think the comments that we got back from last year's submission, they always give you some comments and tell you whether there are any minor changes or, hey, this hasn't changed, this could jeopardize your award. I think they really stretched it this last year. I mean, we got into language, like, instead of calling it right to use asset, we need to put intangible in front of right to use asset. Hell, big nitpicky they got, it's like, hey, clarify this throughout the report. So we've made those updates and feel, I really feel this is one of our best books. We have the firm help prepare the cities that we do. So I think you've really got a finance director and controller who understands this stuff and thoroughly review it. You'd be amazed at the hours that we've spent to modify it. And it makes you guys shine as an excellent city. The last two items I'll point out, if we get to the back, there's some test results and additional notes including the Utah retirement system, which, this year, the Utah retirement system, remember from last year, all the net pension liability went away, which means every single pension plan that they monitor was, was in a positive position, more than fully permanent. This year, because of market performance, that went back down. So the only one that's in a net pension position is the firefighter system. That's all we've been, that's like two point ninety million dollars, or two point three, something like that. The other governmental funds have fallen back into a pension liability, but they're still funded anywhere from like ninety-four percent to ninety-seven percent. So they're not that far in the hole. So we do have a net pension liabilities come back on the books. What makes it interesting is when she gets to the NDA and she starts tracking the differences between years, those aren't an actual expense, it's a paper expense to book that stuff on the pay. You've either got to book the asset or liability or change it. Well, that affects the other side of that, there's an income saving effect. So it's sometimes making the change. I know Layton at one point says, it makes it look like I'm not paying my ambulance people anything. If you technically look at it on paper, but he says, yeah, it's a good majority portion of that because of GAAP sixty-eight, which is just a paper expense. Okay, so those tend to mess with the work income on the case. And I think we were in a new composition and didn't issue. So really, what that means is that we need to start to change. Let's go to the last couple of pages. Page one thirty-seven is our independent audit report under compliance with government accounting standards or auditing standards. So we look at your controls over financial reporting, for review controls over cash to first month payroll, back-receiving, journal entry processing, and so forth. How do you put together a report? How do you report your transaction? Happy to develop, this really isn't an opinion, it's just a report. We didn't find any weaknesses within your internal control structure. We feel the city's doing what they need to be, not only from internal control and preparation over financial reporting, but also from a compliance standpoint. Because you were going to say, well, we get grants from the state, grant from the feds, are we spending that money because it comes with a restriction? Are we spending it right? We'll be doing one of those here in December on your federal ARPA money, your second portion. We will cover that, we'll kind of finish that one. I felt this book was more important than trying to put in a single lot of type stuff. So we will get that one, I fully anticipate. I think we've already covered mostly expenditures on that, so there wasn't any exceptions on those ones. The final report begins on page one thirty-nine, and this is your compliance with the state compliance audit guide that's put out on the state audit results. Now, there are certain things that they require us to test every year, such as budgetary compliance, fund balance, justice courts, restricted taxes, restricted taxes and related restricted revenues, your fraud risk assessment, and governmental fees. The last two are part of a group in which we can test every three years. So happy to report that in all of those situations, there is no finding from our office. We feel you complied with all of those. I know one of the biggest ones that really started to hit is governmental fees. And I really feel they need to provide more guidance on some of that information because it's really getting specific stuff that most organizations, hey, we don't track our building promotes in. Fashion, but we feel that expenses are greater than the revenues that we're getting, so we'll see where that one goes. Any questions?
I have a question. I know, like, I think I put it here on page one twenty-five. We receive revenue from our retail spaces. I know we have a list of like who we receive the property tax from, but we don't have a list of like our retail spaces, is there a reason?
Due to state tax commission disclosure rules. I cannot tell you. I cannot tell you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this isn't true. I cannot tell you by individual, whatever. That's why they're all done by category of what they sell. Whether it's retail vehicle, um, that's basically us, um, municipality.
It's privacy for the business.
Cause if we told you how much tax they did, you could back into yourself.
I'm just curious, cause I know there's other cities that do it. Like Karaman does. Yeah.
I can't tell you that.
It's a state tax commission law.
Okay, I'm just curious.
That would be, uh, BS. It would be statutory.
I'm just curious, cause somebody had asked me about that. I don't know.
I signed a non-disclosure.
Do you sign a rep letter?
Uh, something like that.
Sign the rep. Who else signs a rep letter? For the audit?
For the au- are you talking to the auditor for this?
For the audit.
Brenda and Emily.
So the mayor doesn't sign the rep?
He can if he wants to pledge. I've got the paper.
Kinda like the CEO of Sigh. I just didn't know.
Really, it comes down to preference. So if you wanna sign it, I'm happy to add, if not, I mean, I have a meeting with the mayor and he's surprised of everything that we're doing. Also being dug. And we go over issues, anything that you guys have of significance. Especially if I could do it as part of the audit, happy to help cover those services or if we need to do a separate engagement. More involved and more in depth.
And you do funding grades, I assume.
People throughout the city, from the golf course to the power department.
Then it rotates.
Obviously, if we hit some of the key people, but we also try and hit some of the line people. Is there any little issues we should know about? Any, you know, employee morale, stuff that you've heard? And because of what we do with, I mean, we're up to about fourteen municipalities, I think, at our firm. Plus we do some school district. Counties and we do special districts. If you find something that won't abode, we darn well take it to our other organization and say, hey, you know what? We noticed some, an issue. At one of our city, maybe with, uh, recycling fees. You know, recycling of metal and materials that public works might be involved with. It's like, they may have had a problem. What did you do? On your end, let's make sure you're covered. And the same thing, if we notice a good, even if we notice a good practice, like, hey, you know what? Murray processes this way. Man, that's probably a good recommendation for you guys to take. Cause I'll get a city that, when we complete their audit, they said, let's go do a launch and let's talk about breath practices. Cause we know you guys do this a lot. We've not seen it just once, twice. You're seeing a budget that. So let's go through maybe stuff that doesn't have to be written or a finding. What do you think we could do better? What are we doing well? And we can see with some of our brother and sister agencies out, what can we do differently? So it's great knowledge that we gain that we can pass on to you.
Is there anything we're not doing to you? In a, in a perfect world, we'd want us to be good.
If I were to put my clients in like an A B C, you are definitely in my A, A level category. So I need you more as an example. This is how you should do it. And a lot of it really comes down to like Brenda and Emily. Absolutely. Pay attention to details. Not everybody I get pays attention to details. Don't put me as schedules, like that doesn't tie to the general ledger. So is this right? Or is that right? Or is it neither one of them are right?
Now, does that surprise you that Brenda pays attention to your rule?
No doubt we have the best, I would argue. So that's great. That's great to hear and, and, um, I'd be happy to, you know, clean and. There are always gonna be adjustments and for the adjustments you described, it seems like they're pretty, most of them would have been the minimalist in that respect. So.
That's where I go, you know, even though I've got great faith in what Brenda, Emily do. Looked in, CFO taught me when we first started with H P S A eighteen plus years ago, he pulled out a dollar bill and he goes. What does it say on the back of that venture wood? It said, in God we trust. He says, that's right. Everybody else we audit. Something verified. But I really look at this and say, this is your financial statement. And I have some reports and opinion upfront, but I care about what's in it. Cause if somebody finds something and say, why did you audit? If you look at publicly traded companies, it could have been nothing to do with the auditor. And if something goes on. Auditor is the one, it's scrutinized and hey, you should have found that. But I really care deeply about how this is. And you can see from the journal articles, we do look at everything and give a thorough examination. To come up with, let's make sure this report will act here.
And you're the signing partner.
So I manage the. Or I have the other.
Oh, you managed the practice?
I manage the audit side. I guess audit partner, two other audit partners. Do this quite thoroughly.
That's the contract though. Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. We're going out for RFPs in.
I'll give you a contracted bid right now.
You've been the partner?
I've been a partner since two thousand fifteen.
On this job? You've been a partner? Sorry, on this job?
I used to back when Don Wetzel, previous administration, which we did the audit for Murray City for eleven years. So two thousand five to first year after you hired Justin Solomon. Required in your laws that, hey, we have, Justin made, Justin, when he first came on board, he says, look, I've got all new accounting staff. I, I don't wanna create a new audit. I need somebody who's got stability. Cause everything else here is new. So he petitioned the council for it. Give me at least a point year extension. So these guys have been me through and I can get up to speed on what's going on. Cause he came from Logan and he knew us. That we were doing Logan City at the time. Uh, then you went away, I think for five years to Paddington and Richardson. Came back three or whatever, and then came back to us over the last five.
Uh, it's, it's a three-year contract and we extended it for two. And he has been with us for five. So. Best practice, and I don't like this best practices, that if they're rehired.
That's, it really, that seems fast. Cause public's what, seven years or ten, ten years?
Seven, seven, or I, I know it used to be seven, maybe it's not.
Change it to five.
They require us to say, maybe you could look at it, but it's not a requirement. They recommend it, but not a requirement.
Cause if it's not, if they, if we do it.
Once before was probably three or four, but have. I did it for quite a while. Or a switch. Things they only did it for three. I tell you, I don't like a three-year contract cause they're hard. It takes us, us time. To get up to speed on what you as an organization do. So when people say it's three and then I'm gonna switch. I have very less interest in doing that organization. It's gonna take me at least a year or two to learn what you're doing. Wire it on that forward switch. That's pretty fast.
I think. I've been here, they've been that, like, work that you do do for audit scenes. Especially like with, you know, switching up and talking to other people and all that comprises to the work. And I, and it makes sense why.
Yeah, like.
The relationship.
Hey, she doesn't like it. Well, you, she can give me a trial balance and I can scan down just knowing what some of the accounts are. Sometimes I can pick out and say, you know what? I haven't even looked at anything, but that account right there does not have a right balance on it. I can, right away, I can inquire. I had that with my largest corporate client. Obviously, they have like five thousand over accounts, but I scanned down the accounts. I've noticed over the last couple of years, like, hey, we're gonna have to talk about this one, this one, this one, this one. None of them are right. That cannot be right now.
Yeah, when we were.
You don't gain that by coming in first. That's institutional knowledge, history and staying with the client and looking at the stuff over and over again. And say, that, that can't be right.
We'll look into it. We still need to do an R F P because our contract is expiring.
Yeah, last time we interviewed, when we interviewed you, I mean, Justin just thought that they's, you know, the. What did, what did they say? The sign rose and set with, with you and your organization. So that was such a good. And, you know, we did a few interviews.
Well, we try and pride ourselves in the work that we do and try and be thorough in what we do. Certain goals that we've taken over to like in the state, even looking at what some of these CP firms do. I have one organization this year where I have a six million dollar bond in twenty twenty-two. And it was not picked up. And I said, how do you admit to be six million dollar bond?
Yeah. And then there's also, you know, fresh eyes. There's also the fresh.
That's what the look is. So we have others like, um. All this, uh, we have some other cities, larger cities of your size, that they do a rotation. Hey, we can stay with H P M A, but what we wanna do is rotate the audit position. We're on a partner position. Can you rotate that? Uh, like I said, I've got two other audit partners and audit managers. It's, we can rotate that position. So. Probably nothing that would preclude me from being maybe a staff on it, but we rotated and say, you take over. Is this one I wanna give up? Cause I just told him, hey, this is an A-list client. You wanna get that up? No, to make my life easier. I don't wanna go from an A down to a C and try and fix a bunch of problems. So, yeah, that's a hard pill for me to swallow. But we love the work and love working with Murray City. We've done it quite often. We're gonna stay with you. Thank you.
This guy loves auditing. It's like a fun thing to him. Loves.
Have to be a, if you're a partner, you like, you love it. You chose and it has to be your life. You can breathe in.
Years and years of the credit and, and Rob is really, I'm the best.
If you're good. Changing terms is brutal. At all costs, am I not change rates? Oh, it's brutal.
That's like my private corporate client. It's like, why do we, I mean, I know one of my largest corporate, he's been approached by a lot of his. Partner for another. And he's like, why would I wanna change? That would make my life miserable. He knows everything in and about. I, he just understands it. He would take years to get up to speed. At too much cost. You would be more than he would be anyway, cause you work for a larger firm.
Just don't get a lot of credit, but you've learned a lot. Thank you.
We're loved.
Yeah, I know.
Really the relationship, the way that I look at it and say, I don't wanna come in here and just tell you what you're doing wrong. I wanna say, how can I make you better?
Right. And how long, like, do you guys go back and forth? Like, it's a few months, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we've been working on it since.
It's a.
Miss, Vitsip Kaver. Um, Joanne Spanv last year, whenever she'd have a question on fixed assets, she would call him. Make sure that how he thought we should do it and they thought it should, that we can work it out in advance. So that means there's, there were no fixed asset adjustments on that way. Because if we have a question, we just call and make sure we get it right in the first.
And leases are expected. That's killed everybody.
Yeah.
If you don't find issues in leases, then.
It's a standard that doesn't make sense.
Six oh six, well, you're in the private world, six oh six, in my opinion, is way worse, but, you know.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda, for bringing your team. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to our police department report and we have Chief Greg Vermette here.
Bringing my brain.
You like the.
Oh, no, no. It's kinda low. Necessarily, I guess. Principal statement. Well, thank you for, uh, was that? You were there a lot. Well, you know, you would think that I was that, uh, I was more the gray child, you know. I didn't want anybody to know who I was. I just kinda. The less. Less, uh, attention I got then was probably the better. Yeah, thank you for, uh, asking us to come, uh, to talk. You were good. You know, last year, when we did this, I gave you a pretty good overview. The police department, the, the workings of the department, how it's structured. I know you weren't here and, uh, so. I'm going to just kinda not get into it to be that direction, but more of a, it's not a little review of what. We're seeing, what, kind of what we've been doing this last year. Any questions you have as we go along, please, uh. Well, that's a good question, uh. We have, we're, we are, uh. Authorized to have eighty sworn officers. And then we have, uh. Fifteen civilians, uh, which would be our, you know, obviously are not, are not our police officers. So. But currently we are at, uh, I think seventy-eight.
That's pretty good, yeah.
We're looking at hiring two new straight now. You know, there's always, we've always changed. What we're finding is, uh. Is constant, you know, something we didn't deal with for years. We, we didn't, we had very little turnover, uh, since twenty twenty. That's just the way it is in the world. You know, it's not just us. It's, uh, everybody, uh, all the other agencies. Our, our, uh, attrition is probably still less than a lot of agencies. But we're usually down about two. So right now, we're, we're attempting to, uh, hire two, which are, uh, the two new positions that you gave us in the budget. So we've told Brenda, we wait until.
Oh, so the net, the, the down two is just the two that we added?
Two we're down right now are the two additions. So really, we're not down anything from what we're like budget here.
That's great.
Uh, now granted, two of those, uh, positions are in the academy right now, but we, well. People we've actually hired, but our positions are full. Or those, those positions are filled. We have two that graduated. December. Be out in training for three months. So then, you know, there's word out that somebody's gonna retire first the year, so, or in the spring. But it's just a, a continual cycle, but I, you know, I, I feel pretty good if we're always looking for. One or two as opposed to some of the agencies around here that are down ten, fifteen, solid segment time.
Yeah.
I mean, granted, they're a lot bigger than we are. So it's.
But still, that's a lot.
That's still a lot of money, a lot of dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is just our organizational chart, uh. Kinda give you a brief outline of how we, how we operate. We, we run two different, uh, bureaus, if you will, and each are, uh, overseen by Deputy Chief. One in the blue is our operations bureau. It's, uh, currently Deputy Chief Mike O'Gray. That encompasses all of our uniformed services. So our patrol officers, our school officers, uh. Motors, training, anything that, uh, we're dealing with essentially patrol. That's, that's where, and that, that's probably the vast majority of our officers would fit into. The other side is our administrative services bureau, uh, and that is where we have our detectives. Locations and our. All that goes along with that and includes our crime scene, our crime lab evidence, uh. Anything that's, uh, above and beyond that or, and. Kristen and her, uh, her people, folks, uh, fall under my, my, and, uh, she's the, our new records manager. And just hired a record supervisor that, that will work with the day-to-day. Of our, of our records. So. It's just kinda that. Next, uh, slide is our.
Swats directly under you.
Yeah, there were some, I have a lieutenant that runs it, but yeah, they, they, they answer me. So in order for a SWAT team to be called out, they have to call and get permission from me, uh, or my designated. To be able to, any kind of SWAT team comes out and I know what happened.
That's just a specific subset of the existing.
Right, and those are all officers.
Special training.
Those are, those are officers that do something else. They're detectives, they're patrol officers, but they're also trained as, uh, SWAT operators. Uh, so the wins.
Where we have.
And that's the ones that would go to that inner, inner local agreement, right? In that event, that we have that agreement with other cities where we need that force or whatever.
Well, that, it can be.
It can be, okay.
But essentially our SWAT is just, if we have an, uh, an incident here that requires a little more, uh. Tactical issues, you know, someone's got a gun or, uh, or something like, they have the equipment, the training. Use our armored vehicles for. Something that's not used very often, but it's good to have when we want, so. Just, uh, kinda showing you what we've, what we've done for calls, for service, uh, twenty twenty-one, we were, uh, almost forty-seven thousand. Last year, we were only forty-six. So for whatever reason, we were down about a thousand calls for service. Uh, year to date, we're at forty thousand and we still have a month and a half to go. So we're on, we're on pace to. At least equal twenty-one. Be a little bit above that. So we, we average about four thousand. Be a little bit above that, so we're, we average about four thousand calls.
Oh, my gosh, you'll get seven, six to seven thousand more calls from here to.
Now.
End of the year.
Uh, winter time things slow down a little bit, our our real busy times are obviously the summer, people are out, people are active, kids are. At school, there's just a lot more going on. When it gets dark, a lot of that, they stay in, when it gets cold, even more of them stay in, but we still. Still be busy, so you know, that is still, even at that, I think we're. And there, there's no explanation as to why that happens, sometimes it's just kinda the ebb and flow, so. Uh, averaged out, we're about the same year in the last few years anyway, which is a good thing for for the. One thing that we're looking at uh. Is uh. What's it called, case service?
Yes.
Our records management system is versa term. And they have a, they have a module that uh. A couple of other agencies in the valley are looking at, we've asked to be uh part of that. Bid so that we can see what's gonna cost us. But it's called case service, and what it does is, it's a uh online. Tool that people will be able to go online and pretty much do a report. So that we won't have to call them, we won't have to send an officer, and hopefully that can. Uh free up some of our office, I mean, our officers on a, especially during busy times to do other things. Don't know how that would, how that really will work until we do it and look at it, but it's. It's not anything that would really require us, it's the the uh. Your calling to say your bike was stolen, or something that really doesn't matter if an officer shows up or not. Uh, all those type of calls, we would, it would, we would still be responding, so. Kind of uh, they're they're still getting us that information, it works through uh their process and has some I A uh.
A I.
A I uh. Part of it too, because it uh, you know, it'll it'll go, as they're going through, it'll kick it back, if the, if something they answer says, no, this needs a. Police response, it'll kick it back or forward it to the proper detective, so that's just kind of an idea of some of the things we're looking at. Could cost us a little money, but it could save us money.
Does that, is that, would that like go into a queue before it goes routed to nine one one?
Well, this.
Or no, it would go to the police?
By pass nine one. So. Everybody today wants to get on.
Yeah.
Do everything online, we we get uh reported concerns, you know, which are where you should be going to report.
Yeah.
Other things, but we get people that will, you know, my neighbors are loud, they've got this going on, like, please come, well, we're, nobody's gonna see that until. Monday morning, they're not gonna see it Saturday, so this would be a way for, and just to be able to. Do reports that really don't, it it's not. Necessary for us to actually show up and and do anything. The interaction wouldn't be necessary.
About sounds.
About what?
Sounds, I'm still getting calls about sounds that are coming from underneath. The roads. Have you been getting those calls? Oh, my goodness.
The one lady.
Two others.
Anything, but we can do it.
That's what I tell them, but I'm not very happy. Sounds, me too.
My if like this kitchen had van. Where would you, what we're playing at is everything has to do with the police. The point is, we are who we call. If if you call in the middle of the night, nobody else is coming.
Yeah.
There's nobody else to respond, but we deal with a lot of things that you would sit back and go, what does that got to do with the police? Well, we're, we're just serving the public and we're the face of the of the city most of the time, so. We, we deal with a lot of things that you wouldn't think, but that's just our job.
Are we getting into heat map eventually in this?
On uh.
Are you gonna present the heat map? You usually do, okay, just to make sure, I was gonna ask a question, but we'll.
Yeah, you people, I I know where you're going. Uh staffing, like, so we already talked about that, you brought that up. We're uh. It's great, I was tall. Well, you know, I think it's like.
I'm hungry, being like, do we need to fix that sidewalk?
Well, that's what the old one. For the Christmas, really, that's the picture you get? Standing there with the giant, I love it, I know, really. Once it, once it turned sixty, I didn't realize you lost a foot in the hand. Those, those, and the, those two work the same shift right now, so.
If you were in the middle, it'd be like an offensive line, yeah. They don't give it work, it's pain.
Five, I think, right?
That's better than it used to be.
Well, we can only figure what what applies.
Years.
It's not a, it's not a career that a lot of uh. Or we get women and then they decide that. There's this thing about being a mom, they don't wanna work anymore, so. We.
Wants to, she works here in Murray.
He's asked, anybody that wants to apply, we look at them all, so.
It's getting better, but when you.
Well, you know, we'd like that anything to be higher than what it is, but we look at what we get. Who applies and get uh, you know. What we find as we go through our uh recruiting and and everything else. Wash a significant amount of people out of background checks, through the background.
Yeah, holy, holy, your heat map.
So this heat map is uh, this is dealing with the shelter. Which is also gonna tie into. The crime in those areas, so uh, this is, you know, as we've talked about, these are, are high uh areas of incidents. Forty five hundred south, State Street all the way to the river. The the center part would be around Murray Park. And then down the corner where it's really hot, so hot it's blue, is uh would be the Studio Six Wheeler Farm area. And now uh recently this fall, or late summer, kind of a coalition of uh. Businesses and neighbors down in the Wheeler Farm area have kind of gotten together, we've met with them as the city. Once, and I think some of our officers have met some twice. It's cause they're all concerned about those issues too, so we're working with. With businesses around there to try to help them feel safer, helping them look at things to do and. One of the things that I think is positive that's coming out of there is uh Salt Lake County, when they were finally able to get their threes back from blood control, have started going into Wheeler Farm. And. Deforesting, or whatever you wanna call it.
For the dam.
Yeah, for that whole area is so thick and overgrown, and that's kinda what you want uh uh for that place, but it just gives everybody a a. A place to hide, so they're going through there and they're cleaning it up, they're raising the the canopy so that. You can see from distances and it's it's making it a little less able or. The the ability to to camp there is.
I mean, it's like.
So that, that's kinda helping there as well, so we. This, this is throughout the year, I think we're seeing a little bit of a downturn. It's still pretty good, and so just to speak.
I've actually met with all the surrounding businesses as well as the studio, and I'm going to be meeting with the corporate team here very soon, but we should talk to you. Side.
Yep, we've met with them, we've talked with them, we've, you know, they they've come in, our guys are meeting with them on a regular basis.
But there's some big changes.
Yeah, so, well.
Do you see, since the developing, the development going on around in Murray, do you see a little bit of decline? Of crime in those areas that used to have, like camps and shelters, I mean, you know, like.
Anytime there's something, oh, on something that's there, so we can chase off.
Yes. Especially in District Two and such areas that.
Last time we saw it in the sense of, you know, fire clay felt like had blew, was bluer, it wasn't just the fire.
Yeah, that was, I think, this is over one, this is over six months, the other one was a little tighter, tiny time branch, it might have shown up.
But this is a good. I mean.
And granted, this is just talking about our calls for uh dealing with being sheltered. But you could take that and and look at those same uh, that same heat map, and we could put. The crime map on top of it, and it would, it would mirror this.
Okay, right.
We're we're not, this isn't gonna be much different than than if we put up and said, okay, here's where all our, our uh, our thefts are occurring or 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 something like that, it would be very, very similar to this. So, yeah, we, there's, there's a lot of things we're going, we're working with the city uh departments, um trying to clean up areas that we can't. That we were able to, and uh. This has been, this has been good, because it's not necessarily a police. You say, why the police? Well, this, this is not always our, just our problem, uh and there's not, we can't arrest them or anything, and that's not the. The the goal is to get them help, get them resources, but there are those that don't, but we can't, doesn't mean we could have them camping in our. In our parks or in our neighborhoods, so we're trying to do the best we can to clean that up.
Yeah.
This is uh, this slide, just uh one of the the. Big changes we've had this year, is we've now had two uh police service dogs, uh. The one on the right, uh Riggs is a new dog back there in training right now, uh Officer Yates and Riggs. Riggs we got for free from Syracuse, apparently they wanted, they were finished with their canine program, they. Had said they had a dog that they would just donate, so it's our, that dog's already been through the training, it's training more for the officer. And uh Argos is old, and he doesn't get around as much, so it's, we're kind of in a transition phase, I don't know how much longer Argos will. Be able to continue working before we look at retiring him and then deciding whether we wanna stay with two dogs. Uh, what we're doing with our dogs uh is they are single purpose, which means. We just use them for one thing, and that is uh their nose. They do drugs and searching, we don't use them for aggression or to bite or anything else. Uh, we, as Argos got older, we took that away, uh Riggs was never trained that way, and frankly, it's just a better. Model. To go forward just because of. Follow the news and watch what's going on in Salt Lake City, we don't need that, so.
So this would be, if you pulled someone over and you have suspect of drugs, you would then bring one of these in?
Dogs would kind of search for the drugs, that's, these dogs are, that's what we use these dogs for, that that means they could help us. Do other kinds of searches or articles, but that's what they're trained for, they're not trained to find and buy or use for aggression at all.
Much less liability.
Uh, another uh, this, this is, this is big for us, uh. This is called our POP unit, which is Problem Oriented Policing Unit, uh this came about. From the officers, so. You know, we know we got areas that patrol can't focus on. They're running from call to call, so there's not a lot they can do, detectives, there's only so much they can do. Uh, so what we've done, and we're, we're using kind of overtime for this, uh, we have officers that have signed up, they come out uh. Monthly, sometimes more, depending on what we've got going on, they focus on a particular issue. They spend a lot of time with street racing, because we have issues with that on State Street and on Ben Winkle and. Well, these are the big ones.
Oh.
The street racers are mostly on State Street and those areas, in fact.
Yeah, come to my house on the weekend.
We had the double locality on State Street this summer from street racers. So they work on that, they assist the narcotics officers with uh doing some of their drug issues, they spend an. Inordinate amount of time at certain areas in the southeast corner of the city and the northwest corner of the city, uh dealing with whatever those problems are. So it's actually really good, this is officers that wanna be here, they then do this, so they come out and and focus, and we're hoping that that's helping us make uh. A little bit of a impact on some of these issues that we're talking. We just can't do every day with 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 patrol.
I have a question, does it get rotated out by the officers or?
For this, they they volunteer and they sign up for, so when, when they're going to do this, when they have a a an operation. They have usually uh. Just kind of example, there'd be a sergeant that'd be here, so supervisor, there'd be a couple of detectives that will come out, then then there's anywhere from, usually one of the canine.
Yeah.
Is there, then usually about two to four uh patrol officers, and they, they all sign up, pay turns signing up. With time to come out. Come out to have fun. It's a little different from what they're doing while handling calls, they get to go out and focus on. Chasing cars or or something else, so. Uh, then, you know, the big, we're in our new building, a lot of, a lot of pros, we're, you know. This has been awesome, this is, this is great. Space we have, our evidence is just. We've gone almost four times the size of what we had, so this, this is really good, we're, we're very happy and have very little.
And they like their locker rooms?
They got the locker room.
Those are cool.
The only cons we have is is our storage for our big vehicle, our big uh, our vehicle, so the MRAP is that that motor. Armored vehicle, the military we have. Right now, it's just got painted, so we're getting it, so it'll look less, still big, but it'll look a little less military, but. Uh, we're working with uh facilities to get uh a uh. Hopefully to get some type of cover out here in the back, so it'll get it out of the weather.
You can't put it up. Fire station slash police station slash whatever.
Way too big.
Is it really for that? Oh.
About the only place.
Cause the citizens really like when they're.
Well, we.
Presence there.
Uh, we keep some equipment there.
Yeah.
But we're not giving that as an offer.
They love when they have.
That's, this is, I mean, our other, our old. Armored vehicle is in there, but this other one is just too big.
Oh.
And even our truck, our our van that we have, that's too big, we can get it probably in Station eighty one. If they would let us put it in there, or, you know, Russ's place, and the thing is, they're all full with their stuff, so we're just trying to find our way to deal with it ourselves, our our.
Put a hose on it. Russ, I mean, you know, next combo, Russ is gonna.
So I don't know where you wanna be using that. Think about three hours. Yeah. Elite car and someone behind. You know, and our outdoor evidence storage, we have vehicles that are. Been involved in a homicide or something, we have to keep them off. We don't really have that, but. Russ was able to give us some, uh, some they had, and we put some, some fence around there, so that that helped us out. Those are the only big things that when we moved in here that we, we lost, that the other. Uh, it's kinda where we're at, kind of some of the things we've got going, like I said, we've uh. Got two officers that graduate from the academy in. December, and that will. For now, get us up to uh at least having our allocations filled. But along with that, we have other things that go on, I'll tell the mayor that, we have one of our officers that has been. He's in near National Guard, got activated this week and we got on Friday, and we don't, he hopes to be back by Christmas, but. Not really, you know.
Some more question that I was about you about is mental health and um. Officers? Yeah, not necessarily officers, but having, having a mental health professionals go along with the officers, we've talked about.
We utilize.
What's happening?
We utilize N B A, which is. Mobile Crisis Outreach Team. That's from the county, uh, that's what. We're all using there in the process of updating that, so we can get more to respond on certain types of calls, uh, we have. We have been part of the Salt Lake County Mental Health Unit, not sure how that's going to uh. Try and spot, or what's gonna happen with that in the next few months as uh. As the divorce happens between U P D and Salt Lake County, so that we're not a hundred percent sure, but we we do have. We have that ability with N B A, we uh also have the use of, or they've now opened up. The Huntsman uh Mental Health Unit up at the University of Utah. Somebody riding around with us all the time, no, and that's kind of almost, I don't know how that, how we can justify that expense, but when we need them, we do have. Sources available to call and try to get some.
Yeah, I always just wanna make sure that you do have that, because it's an issue for our officers.
There need, we need a lot more, but the state, the county, they're all working on increasing that and and. Because they're getting that from every agency in the valley, and we're all struggling, we're trying to get them to come out, how long's it? We don't see as much as South Jordan Hermon, they may wait for a couple of hours to get some to respond because of the way. We don't see as much as South Jordan Harriman, they may wait for a couple of hours to get some to respond because of the way. Usually if we need somebody within a. Piece in the period of time, we can get some for those folks.
Yeah, worries me because I think it puts our officers there is. Yeah, it's, it's the biggest.
There's a lot of training. The training that's mandated by the state, uh. We, our officers are not. Clinical social workers, you know, but they're expected to deal with people like that. And that's, it just seems like that's the majority of the, of the calls. These, uh, unsheltered people. The folks, that's almost exclusively mental health issues. For whatever the reason, you know, their, their mental health. So, you know, we try to train them the best we can to get. So they know how to deal with something we're dealing with. The, we, we have mandated autism training so that we know how to deal with, uh. With people on the spectrum. So there's a lot of training we try to get in there, but the, the main thing is when we need professionals, there are. Resources of it. That we can work with.
That's good. And if you need our support, I mean, seriously, I think that's really.
We've talked about it. We've looked at it and currently, you know, we went, we, we got in and started working with, uh. Salt Lake County, the Mental Health Unit. And right now we're just kind of. We want to see how that's going to, what's gonna happen.
How long have you guys been doing that? Like a year? Yeah, cause it started during COVID, right? Yeah. Well, my biggest takeaway on that is just the safety of the officers too, right? Like sometimes you can be in a really sticky situation with somebody who's having a mental episode. And it's, and it's not your guys' job, correct? I agree with that, but people.
When they're having. Because of some of the actions that they're taking. So it's a matter of us knowing once we get there, how, how to. Things, things have changed dramatically over the years to where. I think the fire department probably tell you the same thing. Instead of just running right in and taking care of something. You're gonna sit back, you're gonna look at it, you're gonna assess it and figure out, okay, what do we do? You know, there was a time when somebody would call and say, my husband's gonna kill himself in the basement with a gun. We send everybody over there and we get down there and you try to. Now it's, can you leave the house? Yeah, alright, calls. Call, and then, you know, maybe he'll sleep it off or something else, but. What, what crimes he committed? So it's, and then we have to look at that. Okay, what's gonna happen? Do we, what do we do? How do we do it? Or do we just say? Uh, we're, we're doing the best we can and we back off, so.
And is the community at risk?
Right, and that's the thing that they're about.
Sure.
And just from me, that you can rest assured that Craig's top priority is safety. It's huge. He talks about it all the time. He has sleepless nights. Times where I've talked to him before and I'm thinking, I don't look too bad for a forty-two year old.
I did want to say, uh, Chief, that I've, I've walked and met a ton of people, um, over the last several months and only positive. Whether what people say about our, our police force and, and how you all handle yourselves, the interactions they have. The timeliness, response, everything has been exceptional. And so I do want to call that out that. You know, we are very appreciative of everything you've done in, in the department and, and what your officers do each and every day. We know it's not easy and, and we greatly appreciate it. And I know the rest of the council definitely.
Well, I appreciate that. I was along with them because it's, you know, the goal is to hire. The best people we can and put them out there. And that's one of the things when they come in, I, you know. This is what I expected. We're a community oriented policing department. You don't like that, go somewhere else. And some have. And I don't take, I just assume they go somewhere. I had one that, that lefty hadn't been here very long and. I comes back that he says, well, at Murray, in Murray, I had to tiptoe around how I talk to people. You know, when we're dealing with them, but now that I'm out here, I can talk to them anywhere you want. Well, I'm glad he's gone because I, I don't mind you tiptoeing around. People are people and we're here to serve and we've got really good employees that try their best.
Can I just say something? Um, there was a, a student at Murray, uh. I forgot what school she was, Skyline or something. Her name is Tanya. And she was with the MYCC kids last year. And she brought to me the project of fifty-nine hundred south and seven twenty-five east. And she sent me an email, a text, cause we correspond back and forth because she's a fabulous seller. And she just said that when she got home, she's up at the U and she hadn't been home. And she just said that her little project that she presented to me and that, um, Adam. Looked into it, Adam Hoff looked into it and the project was completed and she was really, really, really excited for the safety of the kids. So she brought it, Adam took it to the Safety Commission people board. And it was completed and she just wanted the police to know that she really, really appreciated it and that. They took it serious and that she was really excited to see that. But thank you.
You guys are awesome.
Yep, everyone. I always get that feeling.
Alright, next.
Kristen.
We will move on to a discussion on a resolution adopting the regular meeting schedule. For the Murray City Municipal Council for the county here to be told before, and the candidates presenting.
So this is actually going to go to the council tonight. Um, so in your packet, I have created this schedule or potential schedule for twenty twenty-four. It is basically the first and third Tuesdays of each month, um, like we have been. The exceptions we have are in August. Your meetings are gonna be on the first and second evenings, which is gonna be August sixth and August thirteenth because there's a UAM's conference. But most of you will probably want to go to August twentieth through twenty-second, which is the third Tuesday. And then in December, um, like we've done for the past few years, we just scheduled on the first and second Tuesdays just because the holidays tend to get really busy. So it's easier to meet earlier in the month. Um, also, as I was looking through it this morning, getting my notes together, I do have a meeting scheduled for November fifth, which is Election Day. So I don't know if we want to look at adjusting those November dates, cause I don't think we should probably.
We do, we've done it for the last three years.
I don't know how I missed it.
Yeah, we've changed it. It seems like.
So for November.
We actually haven't yet, uh.
We have.
Election Day and it was so weird. So we just thought, why would we do this?
Do we want to propose to move that to the twelfth and the nineteenth then?
I had another, just because of kids. In January on the second, if we could change that to the ninth. And then even in September, change it to the tenth.
So we do have to do our open office on January second, so we.
Oh, that's right, okay.
If you guys want to move your council meeting, you can, but we do have to have open office.
That's, I, I thought it was the sixth that was in statute.
It's the first, oh yeah, the first, uh, after, first Monday. In January.
Oh, it's the first Monday. Okay, I was like, I don't, I, I remember by the six it needed to happen. Okay. What about in September for the tenth? I'm only trying to be mindful of like if I'm traveling with my kids, cause we do, we are very limited on holidays sometimes.
Yeah, I'd rather just keep it on the third and seventeenth.
What's the issue with the third? Sorry, help me.
The third is Labor Day weekend. It's always the end of the summer. It's sometimes like some of the alone time that. As parents, we can get out to take our kids.
There you guys, it's your schedule. Let's just see what happens.
Well, I would like to do it now. So if we were to make. That's only.
I'm, I'm comfortable with.
No, I think it's fine as long as we're proactive with it and the public knows what it is. And we're not just all of a sudden changing.
That's why I don't want to all of a sudden change.
It's my forty-seventh, forty-eighth anniversary, so. So I may not be there. I may be in, I don't know. Africa, I'm an elder. I don't know. Yeah, so I just, I just feel that we need to be consistent for the public. If we keep switching things back and forth, back and forth, citizens are gonna get confused. And if we are consistent with our meeting schedules, then they're always going to think, oh. It's the first and third Tuesday. I'm gonna be there or I've got it, we're planned for it. And I think if we keep bouncing days back and forth, it's gonna confuse the public, but.
Well, this schedule would be publicized.
I know, but I'm.
Sometimes we change. Sometime, it just happens. I think at a time.
At it, we're changing August, September for the UAMs. September, we're changing November and we're changing December and November, yeah, November and December. That's a lot. That's one, two, three, four months that we're changing.
In the beginning, so the year schedule's there. And if we do have to change it later, then people can anticipate it. Then we can change.
So we need to make a decision. What do people want? The third of September or the tenth of September?
I would prefer that. I move that we move September to September tenth.
And I say, don't move it. Just leave it as it is.
What are your thoughts? The tenth or the third?
I really don't have a preference either way. Whatever, you need to make a decision.
Can you do that tonight when we can actually take action?
I would rather not just get it cleaned up now so we have a clean.
You can't vote in this.
Oh, that's true. Get an idea at least.
We can get an idea.
Okay, that's fine. We can take it up tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll adjust November, possibly September, three.
Yeah, and that one to be.
That works for me.
Even more to our last item, um, a discussion on updated policies and features for the Murray City Council again for Kennedy.
Working on and I talked to Gary about this and. We have our council roles and our council handbook. A lot of the information in the two documents overlaps. And so I was thinking it would be good to maybe combine everything into one document. That would be helpful to use for training. And just have everything in one place. Um, so I went there and I combined both of the documents. It was hard to do a red line. I, I've got kind of a red line that I could give you guys if you wanted it, but because it's combining two documents, it's very hard to read. Um, so I found if you wanted, you could just kind of go through it page by page. I know a couple of you had some comments. Um, I know Rosalba submitted some stuff. Just kind of look over it and let me know what you guys think.
I haven't had a chance to go over it. I'm wondering if we could, um, extend it. If we could have it for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I think we should, I mean, we've got a little time to go through it. And, and Rosalba had, I mean, Rosalba submitted a bunch of comments. I know Pam submitted comments. I don't have a problem with doing it.
But we can extend it. We don't.
Yeah, we've been looking to you on, we've, let's take our fifteen minutes.
Right, but my hope was to maybe get it adopted before our new council came in. If we don't do it, that's fine. That was just kind of, it's just kind of late. It took a long time.
But this, then the new council might want to.
Well, so yeah, so, so with Diane's comments, we'll start with the first page, which is the foreword. And I actually did add on this, the last three paragraphs are paragraphs that I added. I tried to keep most of the information the same as what we have. But I did add on this, it is the intent of the council to review and advise this, the contents of this handbook. As new, or at least once every two years. So that would be my intent, is that once every two years we're going through it and seeing what needs to be updated. Need a table of contents for you guys. Uh, the Murray City's form of government, that's pretty much what was already in your handbook before. Powers and duties of the mayor, same thing. Most of that's just out of state code.
Um, two thirds majority vote. Three fifths or?
Two thirds, four out of five.
Oh, it has to be four out of five. I just wanted to confirm.
To change the handbook?
Four out of five.
Four out of five.
Just making sure.
Is that?
To be four out of five.
Two thirds majority.
Wait, but was that, that wasn't in the previous handbook, was it?
Um, where are we at?
For four out of five.
It was.
It was. So four out of the five members of the council.
Have to approve.
Is that like a super majority?
Yeah.
Only one can not.
It's the same thing when you go into a closed session. Two thirds majority has to approve it to do that.
Is that code? Is that state code?
I don't believe it's some state.
Cause we can say it could be. A simple minority.
What you said, you have a code that says you have three affirmative votes to pass anything.
Right, I do know that. That's why I was asking.
You could have four in vote and have a three. Off the votes.
Yeah, I think I'd rather keep it consistent.
So a simple majority?
Simple, yeah. I mean. Yeah, it seems like that's what we do with everything else, unless it, it comes to like some of the major stuff or even closed sessions.
It's your rules.
I know, well, that's, that's why there are notes.
So are we good to leave?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we run powers and duties of the city council. That's pretty much the same thing. And like I say, a lot of some information, when I really sat down and compared them, there was a lot of overlapping informations. Different wording, same information. So I kind of had to word some of those together. On the municipal elections.
So Jennifer, what was changed on the powers and duties of the city council?
Nothing, just putting them together.
Okay, so you put them together.
If there was different things in the rule in the handbook, I would have just put them together, but I don't believe anything I had changed on the powers.
And you said you, you can provide if like Diane wants to see a red line of that section, you could provide.
It is confusing, but I totally am happy to do that.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be helpful.
Self preferring back to the old one, like.
So that's what I did too. What I thought might be easier is I, um. Maybe I didn't, I meant to, but I mean, I had the handbook and the rules and I put where I put that new information. Yeah, yeah, and I put where that information was in the new document.
But as far as some of the rules, that, that wasn't in them.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, then for municipal elections, the first paragraph, I just reworded what was in both the handbook and the thing, I did add the council staff during elections, that is new. Um, so if you guys wanna.
So, but you're gonna give us a copy that has all the, the changes?
And if you have anything to add, because I'm getting to places. Vacancy in elective office, that I just cleaned up. It's the same information we had, kind of broke it up. Me and the council. Governance, um, let's see, Rosalba, you have some stuff here. So on the resolutions, you had, so where it says, in addition to the legislative powers, the council also holds. Certain defined administrative powers and again, state code, the powers are generally executed by resolution, including, this was just straight from the code.
Okay, yeah, I just put, um, does this include resolutions? Actually, and as I went, I should have notated this. But as I went through it, it does define resolutions and all of that.
Yeah, and I kind of, as I got going through your stuff, I kind of realized that, that you started going through, but yeah, okay, so you're okay on that one.
Oh, and then right here, for couns- council initiatives on the second item. You put that as we ask for them to do the research, but we can also ask staff to help with research.
Give you a paper, see if you like what I wrote there. So for council initiatives, we want to change where, um. We want to change it to safety. Council members may sponsor proposed legislation to bring an item forward to the council for council consideration. Council members shall follow. The council meeting agenda submission process, which is up later on in the thing, which you noted to have two council members sign up. Additionally, a council member must, and then on the second bullet point, I put conduct research and then in parentheses, may ask council staff for assistance. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
And then I know, I realized it later in the packet, but if we can put like what appendix that is even, just to, so we could, I know you put page twenty-three.
It is page twenty-three, it's not an appendix.
Oh, it's not an appendix.
Yeah, it's actual, it's actual.
Sorry.
Okay, and you had a question about under advising consent, the first bullet point. You wanted to know, can the council do these individually? I'm not sure what you meant by that.
Oh, for interviews. Cause I've, in, in here it says, following the interview, counsel advice and consent. Well, it says, counsel may schedule an. council may schedule an open close session to interview the candidate before advice and consent is conducted. So basically, can the council do this individually, like do their own interviews? Is that, no?
The administration that I'm.
Well, it says, it says advice and consent, the mayor for, so this is what, what Jennifer wrote. The mayor forwards a proposed appointment to the council with application resume, resume and references, sorry. The council may schedule an open or closed session to interview the candidate before advice and consent is considered.
I just want to clarify, this was already in the rules, I didn't write this.
Yeah, and then following the interview, council advice and consent will determine in an open council meeting.
So this means if he was bringing appointments forward, we could ask to interview them if we wanted to go, and we would do it as a group in open or closed setting.
Yeah, as a council.
So, so hold on, you could not do it in closed.
Oh, it says, so.
I know what it says, but you could not do that in closed. Closed session is if you're looking at the character of somebody, but what that really is referring to is if there was a, an administrative action and you were going to get rid of somebody, or you were thinking that there was something negative that was coming out. It's, if it's just an interview to see if you're going to appoint them or consent to that, should be open.
I'll pick that close out, that's.
Or, or define it at the bottom in a footer, like, you can define it, because if you define it in the booklet, just put the definition or where to refer to where.
But if you can't do it in a closed session, it probably shouldn't say you can do it in a closed session.
So we can't, we cannot, because we're not looking at what you just said. Because that's what defines a closed session.
Then behind the closed session of, of an interview would be, or, or to talk about somebody as their character. And that is typically done when there's something negative that's gonna go.
Something for discussion.
But the public would be, if you're gonna put somebody on a board, public should, has the packet, sees what the resume is, and should have the, the benefit of hearing the interview if you're gonna interview them.
So my question is, is if it, let's say, I mean, I'm just using this as an example, but let's say somebody like did have, you know, as a councilperson, we got calls about somebody who like sexually molested kids or something. Would we want that to be in a public, like interview, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know.
I think you do the same thing you do with your seat cumbering back at the end of a closed session, they just talk it out in the open, what you do.
Okay, I, I just, I mean, I.
That's a good question, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out, I'm like playing the scenarios in my mind when I was reviewing this, so, okay? I'm, I mean, I know that that's not something that would happen, Mayor, but I, but I want, I just wanted to ask, yeah. Yeah, okay, I mean, I don't know, it was in here, so I.
You just want me to keep on for a couple more minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all you have on that, Rosalba.
Yeah, and then you put that. I didn't realize.
That's annoying.
Council leadership, um, let's see, you asked where on the council chair's responsibilities, where that was taken from, that was, that's always been in there.
I wasn't, I couldn't find it.
The only thing that I, I did take one out, and that was that the council chair moves council initiatives and projects forward to completion. I took it out only because on our initiatives and our things that we submit, it says you need two council members to move it forward. I could put it back if you guys wanna leave that under the chair's responsibilities.
So that would be implying that if there were two council members that brought it forward, then the council chair could say no to it, or, and not move it forward? That's what that would imply.
You just said moves council initiatives and projects, well, I don't.
I think that should be removed.
I think it should.
But I, I did say that.
I think you're right on what.
And one, one of the things I did wanna add is if we do have to write a press release from the council, that the chair should review it.
Yeah, and I think we should have that under the press, looks like a good, that one.
Yeah, I, I also have a note there too, but I, just to make sure.
Oh, you wanted it under the council chair's responsibilities?
Leadership, yeah, the responsibilities. I don't know how you guys feel about that, I mean, I feel like sometimes, I mean, not that we've ever have, but if we have to.
Is this, is this in line with Communicate's official position statements that have been approved by the council and its spokespersons in?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, and then we had, and then I added a section too about dealing with the, the press.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to clarify for media releases that it at least gets seen by the chair.
So, so for that, that release, the whole council can see it and vote on it?
Right, so, which, I guess we would have to just put that in, I guess for media release. I, I mean, I, I seriously would just, if it, if there was something, I would feel comfortable saying, yes, the chair should oversee that.
Well, in theory, if you guys are talking to the press for a council matter, you should be letting the chair know, cause the chair's actually your spokesperson. So in theory, if you are talking to the press, you probably should let the chair know.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and I just wanna, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that was covered.
So. And also, can we finish five minutes early?
Yeah, I'm only gonna go. Okay, communicating with the media is a new section that we added, um, I, I stole it from another city. And I just wanna add, I, I have worked on this with G L, I've been meeting with her.
Think that made sense?
Yep, yours does. Committees, on the committees, I took out the C I P committee because we don't use it anymore.
And can we look at, at in January, when we have our, um, workshop, looking at the, um, Chamber of Commerce?
So you're gonna be voting for someone to sit on that board for your first meeting in January?
So could we look at that and maybe move it, um, from the council?
Yeah, I don't know, we'll do that.
How would we do that?
Not following your question, tell me again.
Um, removing the chamber from the council and let another.
As one of the, the, and these have.
Yeah, because I never was given a clear explanation why a council member is, uh, going to the Chamber of Commerce when we're, we have nothing to do with them. I mean, we're out of the budget meetings, we're not on the board, we're.
But you can certainly have that discussion for, to the workshop.
Yeah, so we could talk about removing that and putting it into another area of the city or whatever. Because. So, I would just like to have that, yeah.
The other change I made is under interlocal boards, um, with Murray representation, we have a community action program, we haven't been on that for a while. Um, and then I adjusted the mosquito appointment, appointment to March twenty twenty-two, that's all I did. Land use was about the same. Budget overview, same thing.
I did put a note for land use, yeah. Um, and I don't know where this would lie, but I was, I just wanted, I, so as a council member, you're, so third paragraph, as a coun- council member, you will likely consider, um, but like, will, well, as a council member, you could consider but not limited to these following, I mean, we do, or is it just these duties and orders?
I don't think it's an inclusive list, I think that's why it says as a council member, you will likely consider.
Okay, so it could be the same.
But those are the possibilities, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they're not.
I think it is an example of things you might be doing.
Yeah.
Will likely maybe change it to May consider?
Yeah, I mean.
Is it not, I don't know.
I guess I just don't want the council to be limited to.
We can do May consider.
Yeah, cause then it's better. One more minute and then we'll.
Okay, the budget oversight process is about the same, add it. Sorry, I'm Rosalba, I'm trying to get over your stuff.
No, it's fine, I think I, as I read this.
Truth and taxation.
But it has to happen before it's a charter.
That's correct. Uh, meetings, the meetings, new sections I added that are already in code, we just put transfer to this handbook, our attendance on page twenty, attendance requirement for city council members and absences. Okay, so that stuff has been in code for years, it's just now part of your.
Yep.
So it's there. And I think that's a great example.
Perfect, and at that point, you will stop there and.
And thank you for the thanks to you guys.
And any other things in the council? We're done, we are adjourned, and we will pick up our E A meeting in five minutes.